I had to see.
Yeah, I printed one off for him this morning, so I thought I'd just get it all for you.
Any battery work for the time here?
No.
Okay, I think we'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to your flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and thank you all for coming. The first meeting of 2026 commission meeting. I'd like to, before we start at zero, wait, can we make that recorder record with that too? I mean, that there too, but I just want to start the new year. I feel that when people talk on there, and we don't know who they are sometimes, and I think that would help if we needed to get good clarification, then we could see who's talking. And that thing has the capability to record, right?
Yeah, I just haven't gotten into it to figure out how that works, so.
I thought we did it right away when we got it. So that's just.
Yep, let me see.
See if you can do something there.
You mean you want them to record the person talking?
Well, so that thing records everything. It did. That's when we got it. That's what it was supposed to do. And then we also record there. But you can't tell, if you speak up, and I listened to it a month ago, I had to listen. I wanted to play something back at home, you know? And, because you can get a recording from Marsha or, and I didn't know who was doing the talking for sure. Because you're just listening. Did you talk or did you talk?
And one of the things in our policy manual was to make sure that everybody speaks their name prior to making a comment.
And I want to reiterate that too. That was my next thing, but I, I, I'm just going to say that now. When we do talk, anyone, and I'm going to try to make it happen. I know we've been a little lax, we have been, and so that we can know it's Jeremy, you're talking, you know what I mean? Because when you listen to it, you don't.
Are you wanting like a microphone recording device so they have to go up there?
You can hear everybody talk. You can hear them when they talk. I hear Dean, because I know he stays there. But if it's somebody else, you don't know who it is.
It's recording now, so it's recording audio and visual right now.
Okay, so I just thought maybe that would help us if we needed to get clarification who was talking. Okay, all right, well, was there anyone on the, on the agenda here? Anyone on the public comment period? Somebody there? We'll go to approve the minutes from last month. Is there any additions or corrections?
I saw.
I'll second.
Are we doing both minutes then, same time?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, that's fine, both minutes. All right, is there, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approve today's agenda. The, is there anyone, any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, yesterday Clarence Sitter had stopped in for a support letter from the city of Midora for the Rural Catalyst Grant Application, so I would just ask to have that.
Yeah, all right. Anything else? Someone want to move to accept the agenda for today?
I moved to approve agenda.
Motion.
With the addition.
With the addition, all right. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move to department head reports. And what is our first thing? Nine forty-five, so we got a little time. Who wants to go first today? Dale.
Sure.
Oh, he is, all right. Dale, you need to jump up faster.
Oh, let's see, so 2025, I read fifty-six responses. They were actually paged out, a couple more than average. Seven spills in the last month. Board meetings will again rotate through each station on the third Wednesday of each month. Annual meeting will be held March eighteenth at the Midora Hall at seven P M. And radar Bowman contract should be in front of ya.
It's in with the bills. It's an annual bill, so it's the 2025 contract, but we would need a motion to approve it for another year if we want.
I think she put it right on top.
So here, here.
Yeah, over there.
The blue one right there.
Okay. So how many, you didn't give us a report this time? Or did you on email? I didn't see it. Okay, how many, how many calls?
Uh, fifty-six.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so this bill is for weather radar contract, is that right? All right, for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yep, for the Bowman radar.
And this is for one year?
Yep.
Okay. Is anyone, okay, we need to get a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? And we do this every year, right? Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Anything for me?
Good.
Perfect.
He beat me getting up, I guess. So we're down three calls from last December, pretty average low for us. Actually, it's had pretty darn good weather, though, I think. Been lucky on that front. I didn't get a chance to go through my year-end report, so I'll have that for the next commission meeting in February. I guess some of the stuff that we've been working on, December the twenty-second, we had a meeting with the state. And some of this, I probably, you know, can talk about too, but the city, the county, and the state met over at the community center and talked about the upcoming event, library. Folks were there as well. And just trying to dial in like what's being planned and, you know, how many people are going to be attending some of those things. You know, we know it's going to be over our capabilities, so I mean, we're asking the state, you know, come forward with some funding support. So we have a couple of days of meetings coming up here this week, actually. Tomorrow and Thursday here in Midora, so we're going to be meeting with some of the governor's staff, highway control, D O T, the library staff, city, county. So hopefully it'll be productive and we kind of have a better idea exactly what's being planned. There's so much talk out there that it's hard to separate rumor from fact. And, you know, we've heard about, you know, so many different things from concerts, you know, that they're happening, that they're not happening. And hopefully we can come up with a better idea and have kind of a better understanding of exactly what, what is going to go forward. Missed anything there? We're still looking at lodging, coming up with plans for that and, you know, feeding our first responders. And again, we've asked the state for assistance on that, because obviously this is going to be, you know, it's not just a city-county event, it's going to be a statewide, actually national event. I don't know if anybody had noticed. Here, this was news to me on December the twenty-second, where President Trump has announced thirteen signature events across the nation. And Midora is listed as one of only three around Independence Day. So it's the national word and landscape, I think. It's, it's getting out there that I think we're going to see a lot more people than like, what, you know, the original estimates that we've had, so. Like I said, hopefully we get more information. And we started planning for this. I think the first meeting we had at the library last year was on April the third. And by May, we were already, you know, starting to reach out to different agencies for assistance and help, so. And with our budget now, it should, each of, each of us will have that, like, I think I've got two hundred thousand dollars identified on my budget, correct?
Correct.
For that.
Yep, but you'll still take it out of your individual line items. You'll just mark every bill TRPO so that we can track it.
So then.
If that makes sense.
Yep, it'll be tied to that Costco account, okay. All right. Any questions for me?
When did they change the speed limit back to eighty?
Actually, that would have been three weeks ago. Yeah, yeah. They got a lot of heat over that. We got a lot of calls on that too.
Mean if it going up or down?
Well, upset that it was, you know.
Down to seventy, yeah.
Because.
So does it go eighty all the way?
It does, yep. So that's done, so. I was glad to see that, actually.
Yeah, I thought I was.
Remember when you told me that too.
Yeah, no, they took a lot of heat, is what I've heard, so, which is good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Only thing I would have to add is that, I mean, we need to find out these next two days, the funding source. That's not an option. They have to somehow, between the state and the library, we have to identify that funding source.
Okay.
Just so you guys know where.
Well, it'd be better if you did. We're just going to try it. If you want to add to it, that's, that's.
No, I just.
Keep things going the right way. Thank you.
No, I did, you know, just so you guys know that, I mean, we're going to have to identify a funding source. We cannot wait any longer. We're way too far into this already, so, I mean, that's the next two days, hopefully between the state, the library. Dean's been very well attending all those meetings, but we just got to figure out the funding source this week. The deadline's going to be Thursday, otherwise we're going to have to do some other avenues of, of funding, so. Just so Jim and.
Yeah, good to hear.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that's going to be attended by everybody this week and then between all the governor and whoever's staff is going to be there, so. Hopefully, something can happen. Come on up, Dale. Morning. Morning.
So the big thing was the water main break in the south side of courthouse. Got that taken care of quite quickly. The bill is already in, I believe, so. We did do, it was a six-inch coupler that rusted away, broke, and we did some preventive maintenance on the four-inch too while we were in the trench, so. That's all I've got.
That's all cast iron coming in there, huh?
It's all poly, well, just the fire, the six-inch fire is steel and the rest is poly. But the coupler was cast, which was the weak point.
And that's what broke, okay.
Yeah, thank goodness it happened.
Yeah.
Still, still a little thing left to do, but it's service.
Over Christmas for Dale.
So in the case that would have happened, like to say on Christmas Day, if somebody driving by ever seen it, would they just have to basically call the sheriff? How would we, how would that process work?
Anybody know?
You could see it flowing from the outside. Was it a passerby that called?
Yeah. So. So if we would have been closed, is what I'm asking, how would it?
Could have happened any night too.
No, what I'm saying, does it call in?
They would call.
When they call the courthouse here, does it go to your office or what?
No, I think maybe, you know, we, we need to look at that too, because on the sumps, we have that alarm, right? It's an environmental alarm that keeps track, maybe, and I guess if we could put like the wire sensor around the basement or something, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I've kind of thought about that too, because in the courthouse museum, we also have, I think that's on a heat, you know, if the temperature drops below a certain level, I mean, that might be something we want to consider.
I guess, well, what I was asking, when you call the courthouse after hours, does it go to the sheriff?
Well, if it's an emergency, it'll basically say, push one and it'll take you right to the state radio. And then they'll.
Okay, that's what I was worried. Say it happened on Christmas Day.
Yeah, so if you call our office number, that's, that's what happens.
Yes.
But you have to call the, their office.
Their office, not the courthouse.
Right, right.
Okay, that's. Well, in the city, you'll get notified, because they're the ones that are going to come shut it off, right?
Yeah. Because we've had, you know, we've had that sump system fail in the basement before. And then I know that's when those one-train devices were added, but I, I don't think that would be a bad thing. That would be pretty good.
Okay, well, yeah, you can look into that if you want.
Sure.
It'd be good. Okay, everything's good then?
Yep, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Juliana? And Stacy, you're later. And Kyle.
We ended the year with three hundred and seventy, which is a new record for us, so we had a busy year. You do have my year-end report in there as well, so you can go through that. If you have any questions that we know. And we were awarded a five thousand dollar grant from Wino, and we'll be using that to replace some of our tactical vests that we carry in the ambulances, so. You have any questions for me? Stand for questions, otherwise, you know how to get on me.
All the, all the ambulances are operational?
Yep. The new one that was supposed to be here of June this year, of May last year, is now scheduled for September of this year. We're trying to work it up the schedule, but we'll see if it happens.
You're worse than fire trucks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys can do it.
Morning commissioners. I just got a couple real brief updates on those two projects. I'll start with one hundred thirty-fifth East of Fryburg there. Jensen Brothers has their culvert phase done. There's a couple end sections they put on, but they fulfilled their obligations as far as the interim completion date we had on that, so. We sent in the payment, I think, last month, so what was done last year has been paid. They also obviously have the rating left on it. In the spring, we don't know when that's going to happen, but I would think maybe April or May is when they will, will complete that. One thing I failed to check, and I don't know if Marsha or Pat, if you can maybe answer this. We had sent in that flex funding for the, for the future paving phase. I've not heard anything from that, from the D O T. A little surprised, so I'm not sure what that means, but haven't heard anything on, on the flex funding phase of that project, so. The other project to report on is that bridge on Upper Magpie. And the D O T just has one thing left. They need to update, it's kind of a, in the weeds here, update the wetland table. They do that by the end of the month. We're securing a April bid opening date. Right-of-way is secured, the core manager's permit is secured. We just need the D O T to update the wetland table that we gave them, so that happens in the next couple of weeks. It should be confirmed for a April bid opening. The last thing we need to do is complete the plans, and they're, they're with me right now. We'll coordinate with Pat on a design review, review meeting. And I would say in the next two or three weeks, send those plans to the D O T, they'll send them back. And then the bid opening is secured for April, so. Took a long time to get there and appreciate everyone's patience, but it's, it's been a struggle, to be honest with you, but I think we're there. April bid opening construction sometime this, this season, so.
Can you refresh my memory? Are we doing culverts or a bridge there, or what was, it was kind of back and forth?
Yeah, we tried to do the bridge, and what happened is the D O T actually doesn't allow the guard rail that we had for a pre-complicated bridge, so what we switched to is a double-cell box culvert. So it'll be essentially one box culvert, but double-cell box.
And that historic bridge there can just be, what's going to happen, can be trashed then? No one wants it?
Yeah, we, we've put it up for adoption, so to speak. No, no response, so I should double-check, but I believe it can just be removed, dismantled. There's no way to, there's no reason to salvage it at that point.
Yeah, okay.
So that's all I had. Any questions?
Thank you.
Give me the short report. Crews have been plowing snow, laden up the ice, sanding roads. They've been hauling the stockpiled up the Logan pit and scoring into their shopyards. District one got it. Front lift group installed on their tractor and a blower delivered for it to go on the front. It's all hooked up. Hired one new employee, started yesterday for district two. And then we had a meeting with the state on Thirty-Sixth Street going to the Rough Rider State Park. After the last meeting, they're looking into acquiring right-of-way engineering and building the road. And afterwards, there's a possibility of a maintenance agreement, but that's what they're looking at right now, so.
I went down there yesterday, and that was just terrible.
Yeah. But that's, last week, visited, Stacy was in on the meeting, and Mr. Weir was.
So is the Sully Creek subdivision included in that then too?
Yeah, the subdivision, the very north part of the subdivision has a forty-foot right-of-way planted out. And then it, and then you have like the thirty-three feet of statutory right-of-way, but it, basically the north end has forty feet of right-of-way. But then there's no other extra right-of-way except for the thirty-three feet on all the other parcels to the campground.
Well, and then I see that they plowed in electrical line there right along the fence. So was that, that was, that was an A R W we did earlier. Okay, because that's, that all was new there. They got a new box down at the end there?
Well, the flats have utility improvements too.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was just, hopefully, everything will get taken care of. And who's going to pay for that?
The state.
Okay. All the way out, all the way out.
Yep, all the way from the pavement, and they're looking at gravel, possibly treated gravel, you know, with the dust of crescent. But that's their plan as of right now.
You kind of grabbed, we bid yet on Harpers, or did we do that?
Not yet. We still haven't gotten all the details ironed out. Plan to bid in the next couple of months here.
And then, did you have a meeting with Pete on that, out there for that?
Pete? No, I haven't been with Pete yet. We were going to wait till after the holidays here and get together on it, so.
On what, what is that?
On the Gap Road.
Going down the county.
Yep.
Do we have any update on the load pass road system for restrictions of zones?
Talking over with load pass sheriff's department with everyone I've visited with. If we're going to do anything, I'll do north of the interstate or south, but I'm not going to divide it into zones. It's too messy and it's a hassle the way it is.
Well, even if we had something, I mean, instead of the whole county, I mean.
Right, and I'll do north of the interstate or south.
So basically that'll be one, one zone and one zone?
Yep.
And so when can that be in effect then?
Whenever I put them on. They'll just state in the description Billings County, and it'll be north of the interstate is.
Oh, oh, it won't show on your map like, oh, this is zone one, that is zone, okay.
No, we'll just state it in the comments.
Okay.
So.
I see your point on it, I do. My thing is, north of the interstate, that's a big area. It could have Franks Creek on one condition and then north on a different, I don't know. I see about doing it, but I mean, that's just a big area.
Are you guys signed up now to see when it, when it goes on and off?
What's that?
Load pass. Are you signed up to see now?
I don't. I need to get that done.
No, I think it's a good deal, at least now I know.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that.
I wish we could figure out something, maybe further north to have a boundary.
I'd be in favor of that too.
I would too. So it goes just inside the county boundary then? It doesn't go into Stark County or does it use eighty-five?
No, we're, it's, as far as what we control, it's just Billings County, nothing else. Stark County controls their own, Dunn, McKenzie.
Right.
We only control Billings County. Now, on Six Mile Line, that is under Billings County's jurisdiction. That is in the load pass. Whether or not the truckers, believe it or not, that is in Billings County. And we'll work that out with load pass and Stark County.
Stark County.
Because I figure if they drive on the south half of the road, that's got to be Stark County, but.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would just add.
Well, just stand up would be good enough too.
As far as, it needs to be definitive. You know, we've talked about that or whatever too. Something that, you know, like side road or something like that as a cutoff point, I guess I, I would have an issue with that. But like if you used Highway eighty-five, like we talked about that at one point too. You know, if you use maybe that to the, to the east and to the west, I guess. I guess I think that would be definitive. I mean, people know where that is. Or as you come out of some of those side roads or whatever, I think that, that could be a problem or whatever, so.
I do see that be easy, but I still have a complaint on, you know, especially when it has happened, you know, that Franks Creek area. Blacktail going south is different than north. I mean, it is, so you'd have to draw a line this way instead of north and south, and how do you do that? I, I, you know.
And that's where visiting with the sheriff's department and myself, you can't, you don't have a straight line or there's not a hard boundary. If you look at the other counties, there's a hard boundary. There's paved road. There's something that definitively says, don't cross this.
So guy could use like Blacktail and then across Four Corners, that road going straight east, I mean, guy could use them boundaries, I mean.
I think it would just get too messy. It's not a straight line. It's not something that says, here's where you're at. You know, and if you close Blacktail down to the interstate, you're going to run into troubles while the Blacktail's half in, half out of the zone. What's considered? It's too messy, and that's where the sheriff's department also feels that if you can't have a defined line, it's tough to sit there.
It's tough to enforce, but I guess, you know, the other part is, it's like we had those rain events from last spring. I mean, how often do we see that too, you know? I mean, over the years, I mean, how many springs have we had or, you know, with all that rain? I don't know.
But even like this winter-ish, if we call it winter, I mean, you know, we've had to shut them down, and not to say that I was against shutting them all down, but, you know, maybe down here it's worse than, and he ain't got nothing, no problems.
Right.
So that's, kind of goes both ways.
Yeah.
Well, and I think this last time, Ten Street was getting tore up. Further south was better.
Oh.
It was the opposite.
It goes, you know, but it was, it was bad down south.
Yeah, so I understood that. It made sense.
I guess the end of the day, that's your decision, you know.
So you have to shut the whole county down, and I know we had that incident this last summer, and I see what the guy was saying, I mean, he claimed it was good his way. And I did drive that way, and it was a one little section that was, but you can't do what we're doing just on account of one person too. I'm just saying, it'd be nice if we could have drew a line out through the county. That would be good. I just, I agree with you. I don't know how without, you know. You could run into issues, you know, later. I mean, I don't know.
Even if we just try something different and say, oh, this isn't going to work, or, you know, a lot of it's keeping the heavy trucks and the commercial trucks. commercial trucks, I mean, that pay attention, I mean, most ranchers aren't, farmers aren't signed up for it even pay attention, but I think it would deter some, but.
No, but it doesn't deter, deter though, there's trucks sneaking around non-stop, that's, you drive out and you don't catch them, it's like dents, you know, the roads are closed, no, is, I don't know, they're out and they don't pay attention.
Well, I think it's something that we're gonna have to get reviewed a little bit more so that we can come up with a a little bit better than the whole county, I sorta like the.
Do you see a big difference in south of the interstate to north?
South of the interstate to north, yes.
You do?
And that's a hard line, it's easy to shut off, and that's the only zone I would ever do, honestly. I know, understand the up north problem, but there's not a hard line that says, this is the road. It's tough to do.
I think the only one would be eighty-five, but is that good enough?
Do you see that, the difference from east to west side of eighty-five?
It's more level on the east side, it's pretty near all level.
Well, but your storms run, your storms all run east to west.
No.
And typically, I mean, sometimes they won't have anything on the west side of the river, like that's not terrible over there either, and.
Guess I would take care of your problem on Ten Street, you did, right?
Well, but on the other side, you got maybe by Blacktail, Frank's Creek now. You know, I just, you know, I don't go out and look any like, to see if there would be a good difference or not. You hope everybody gets moisture, but this last time, well, I think we had more snow out there, and when it got packed in and when it melted and they moved that rig, that's where we were. And that's, I mean, I've seen your county a lot by shutting them down there, and I don't know how it was, so.
It was in the same condition. I was out checking roads and driving.
It wasn't good down south either.
And I mean, they were cutting and the frost was coming out.
And I opened the roads back up in the morning when it was froze, and then I shut them down again when they started.
No, I'm all for that, that's.
That way there was windows to get in and out, that was.
Well, let's try that for now, I guess.
North, south?
North, south.
Okay, well, at least you have something to start with.
Get some, get started there and see what happens.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And then I did get ahold of Yrick, and he's planning on starting them pits in the spring, so, just so you're aware, people ask.
Uh, which ones? Which ones is that?
The mouse and the shirky. Anything else?
Well, I don't know, um, there, there's been some things, I guess, I don't know what's in the policy book, but, um, about other people driving equipment in the county besides county employees. And so is there something in the handbook about that?
What do you say that, you mean?
Well, so, somebody used the loader down in the Adams pit.
Yeah, John Romanisian used it.
Okay, so he isn't a county employee. And I don't wanna single out anybody, I don't want that known. But it's been going on, somebody's been running a blade, somebody's been doing different things. Is that a accepted thing?
It's in the policy, and it wouldn't be covered under our insurance.
They're not covered, so, and there always was an old rule that you don't, nobody could run stuff like that. You're saying running blade too?
Yeah, that's what I heard, so.
So we had, we had Evan, when he was contracted on with us hauling, he would just wind roll the gravel at the end of the day.
And running a county blade?
Yeah.
I just, okay, I guess if it's in the policy book, it's gotta end.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Um, who else left? I didn't ask you, go ahead.
I only had two small things before the resolutions. One was the appointment to council on aging. Darlene Mitchell called and she resigned due to some family obligations that she has. I have my hooks out, so I'll plan on coming back to the next meeting with the recommendation, unless you guys have somebody in mind.
I have somebody in mind.
Yeah, what is really they do, I mean, I.
They meet once a month, so it's the, the public transit bus that picks up anybody in Billings County.
And they come from Beach though.
They come from Beach, yep, and then the elder care, so they contract food services. Currently in Billings County, we don't have a restaurant that is contracted with them, but we used to have Four Corners, but he was just unable to do that.
Okay. All right, anything else?
And the only other thing was the addition of the City of Midora's Rural Catalyst Grant application. Um, they're doing an application for this city pool. So you can see the letter in front of you. And this was provided by the City of Midora, not drafted thing.
Where is that paper?
Right there, right on the fingers.
Do we need to make a motion to?
To approve, but a letter of support.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Paul could definitely use an upgrade.
So you're gonna make an official paper?
That one is fine to sign. Yep, and then I'll give you a copy of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Julianne, or you're done, Marsha?
I'm done.
Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry. All right, well, we'll move into, I think we're done with everybody. Move into the resolutions.
So the resolutions are the same as they are every year, resolutions one through ten this year. Resolution number eight has been removed until next month because we don't have the pledge reports yet from the banks to complete that resolution. Resolution twenty-two-six dash zero-one points the individual state's attorney, emergency manager, magistrate, et cetera, et cetera. That have been the same as last year, except for the state's attorney changed to Jared Heaton and Olivia Krebs. If you guys have any questions, just stop me, I'm not sure. Um, resolution twenty-two-six dash zero-two, unless you guys have any concerns with those particular dates for the commission meetings. Those fall okay. The one, November fifth, is moved to the Thursday, obviously, because there's an election on the Tuesday, so.
So, I am gonna look at these dates, um, June fourth. I see that's a change, right, cause the red means you changed it?
Red means it was moved to a Thursday because we had made a determination last year that anything before the third of the month, if we hold it, we don't have all the, the financials in to give to you guys at the next meeting. But you can do it on a Tuesday, you can keep them all on a Tuesday if you'd like to.
Put them all on Thursdays if you wanted to?
Yep, you could do it on any day of the week if you want to.
And November fifth was because of election?
Correct.
Right, that makes sense. Yeah, I, I guess that's fine. As long as it's advertised that way, everything is, um, good.
And if something comes up where we can't have a forum, we can always have a special meeting instead of the regular.
We did that.
Yep. Uh, resolution twenty-two-six dash zero-three, I placed in there the regular holidays that we've had along with the half a day on Friday that was approved at the last meeting. But I'm assuming you wanna have a conversation regarding these. Or none.
I'm fine with them.
Yeah, they'll have to work.
Huh?
They'll have to work.
Okay, is there something you wanna change?
Well, last year we got them added back in that we removed from before.
There was one, right?
Few extras that.
The Juneteens, right, and what else? Got added in?
Yeah, there was.
Well, we added the presidents last year, but yeah, that isn't on this year, wasn't it, Jimmy Carter, we added that?
It was the funeral for Jimmy Carter.
So I mean, that's not on here.
That's not on here, no.
You just have that in Juneteenth, I guess I'm okay with it.
And those I just pulled from what was, what were the federal listed holidays? The only one that is a state, um, state holiday and not a federal holiday is Good Friday. Resolution twenty-two-six zero-four declares that the courthouse is open for business Monday through Thursday, eight to four, and Friday, eight to noon. But the county employees work a forty-hour work week. Resolution twenty-two-six dash zero-five recognizes the per diem rates of nine dollars for breakfast, fourteen dollars for lunch, and twenty-two dollars for supper. Um, and that they will be reimbursed at ninety percent of the GSA rate.
So that's still seventy cents?
Seventy cents is the mileage currently. Resolution twenty-two-six zero-six just authorizes us to pay claims and expenses like payroll and postage, telephone, et cetera, that happen in between meetings. Twenty-two-six dash zero-seven designates our depositories for public funds for State Bank of Golva, Choice Financial, BMO Bank, Rivera Bank, and Bell Bank. Unless you wanna add any or remove any, or take money out of somewhere. Twenty-two-six dash zero-eight authorizes my office to redeem certificates of deposit and other investments of the county as they come due in between meetings. Resolution twenty-two-six zero-nine requires us to publish in the Billings County Pioneer all legal notices so posted in the courthouse. I can give you a copy.
Cause I think I got it. Cause you've given me one the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm ready, keep going.
Um, yours actually, no, that would've changed because I corrected some stuff on resolution twenty-two-six-ten. So I'll just make a copy of that page for you.
We're going eight, twenty, or something?
Well, I think we're going to ten now.
Okay.
I thought, or maybe I skipped it here. Oh, yeah, the Pioneer that we approved, yeah. It's there on ten.
Thank you.
And the last one is resolution twenty-two-six dash ten, which sets the maximum salaries for the positions in the county. Exclusive of insurance or benefits or longevity or additional payments that they receive for on-call time and things like that. And these were all that were approved in the budgets.
So now is the time to change something, now would be the time to do it?
If you wanted to change salaries at this point, um, you can, what was approved in the budget is what's gone into effect as of January one, but.
I'd move to proof resolutions twenty-two-six dash one through ten minus eight, is that what you said?
Yeah, no, eight just was removed from there, we, we changed with a different eight, so it's one through ten.
Resolutions one through ten.
Okay. There's a motion. Twenty-one, one through ten, all right, is there a second?
I saw ten.
Okay, there's a second, any more discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And I'll give a, a different copy for you to sign.
Anything else on that?
Nope, I guess I will do that a little faster than I thought it was.
Okay, um, what is next, zoning?
And I can start early.
Huh?
I, I can start early if you want.
If you're ready, sure.
But my report's fairly short too, cause we didn't have a zoning meeting in December, there wasn't any applications. And we don't have any ARW applications, and so we will have our regular meeting in January. There's some ordinance, um, you know, talks of updating ordinances. One thing that we will have to amend this year will be a flood insurance resolution. And that's required by the state, there was a senate bill twenty twenty-seven that was passed in this last session that said if you haven't updated your ordinance since twenty-twenty, you need a full revision. Um, and so the state has model ordinances that will basically be copied and pasted with our information, and it's for, like, we're not mapped by FEMA, and so it's mostly, you know, language that has like common sense for flood hazard prevention. You know, it's not a requirement to have flood insurance for people that live along the river, but in order for the county to participate in the national flood insurance program, so people can participate in flood insurance, um, we need an ordinance for it, and then that ordinance would end up getting sent to the state, and then there's an annual certification that they're doing now, saying that we, we have, we cover these areas within the county. And so, so our ordinance would cover everything except for the City of Midora, and then, um, it's also like the one-mile ETC would also be the City of Midora. So everything else would be under the county jurisdiction. And then, so that's on the agenda for January. Um, other thing that we'll be adding to, um, the January meeting is a discussion on zoning ordinances relating to camping and campgrounds, and then also just continuing the talk on housing. And then for taxes, tax department, primary residence credit is open. Right now, the window goes from January first to April first, and it's all through the state. You have to apply through the state, and then the state gives us a list of people who, who had applied, and then we review that list. You know, to verify if it's somebody's primary residence, um, and then if somebody already qualifies for farm home exemptions, you know, they, they don't have a tax on their house, so they don't get primary residence. So there's a few of those that I have to remove every year. And so we've posted it, you know, flyers went out in tax statements, and then I just put it on the website in the county placement page, so hopefully, you know, the word is out. So that's all I have for right now, if you guys have any questions.
So the flood ordinance, uh, the zoning's gonna prove it and then it'll come to the county to be approved?
Yes, and it, and there's kind of a tight schedule for adopting it because it has to be adopted by May, so there's a hard deadline that the state put in that. because it has to be adopted by May, so there's a hard deadline that the state put in that bill. And so, January zoning meeting will be a preview. I'll have, you know, just kind of discuss of like, this is what we need to do. February zoning, we'll have the model ordinance prepared. And so, best case is that it would go to Jan, or February zoning, and then March County Commission. Or at the very latest, if there's two kind of reviews at zoning, it would go to the March zoning and April County Commission meeting, and then it would be, notice would be published in the paper for a thirty-day comment period, and then by mid-May or so, everything would be official and sent to the state.
Gotta get done.
So, yeah, it takes, it takes a lot for, for that, so we have, have a tight schedule to get it done. But the state has a model ordinance, and it's basically like, okay, this is what we use, so we'll go from there.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? Thank you. So, do we take a break?
We could take a break and then...
Come back and finish the last thing, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think you have to wait until ten-thirty, but...
No. Just take a ten-minute break then, okay?
He's in need of some power.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all, uh, the humilius, the west line is...
I don't think we will, but I'm, I'm wondering myself.
Alright.
Yeah, I think, um...
I think your own system...
Not yet, I'll... Already have them approved. Clarence struck out the final congresses. Four in three years, and they're over in the report. Beamsina, Shannon Broden, Sina, all Sina. Clarence meets, the only one that should be here.
No, it's already been approved, so I'm gonna tell, whatever's your... Meeting is part of it, and so you sign off it for the county commission. And then, county, yep, because the county commission signs it, the county engineer signs it, which will be Broden, and then I'll sign off.
Thirty-seven.
And then...
So Tommy was always, you know, a peak...
Cause I go down there just to...
Are they moving dirt or are they starting construction? Well, they're starting construction.
Those are all gone except that. And the two steel benches, they've got to be over. And then I came around West River.
The Rockston?
Yeah.
Down the Plumlee? That's the Rockston House. Yeah, the, the houses have been, the house and the garage.
How many houses can you catch?
I...
That's all...
Yes, that's another shop.
And that's, there's quite a few people.
So if you go past Plumlee?
You know, I guess our biggest thing is not, and they just say, how long will it?
Thirty-seven hours, that's...
Yeah.
No, that's a different thing. And then you go up.
But I think, yeah, it's Maryfield Road, yeah. Yeah.
So if you go up to the top, if you turn and go, turn, it's Kim Chee on that. Ends up a cage.
So, in my...
I think, well, Kim Chee.
Alright, so, so when you come on there, there's yours, this is yours.
Yeah.
And that's where we got an issue for me to do the...
Yeah, you might have to come to this, yeah. So this is just the trail, and, uh, then as you come down...
Wow.
And then you see the...
Something I don't know about, that's people passing.
Somebody's squeezing all my kids, yeah, yeah, that's in this, right? So, yeah.
The garage, yeah, it's like a tall garage. It's a tall, deep, it's a tall, deep garage. It looks bigger from this, but, yeah, it's like, yeah, when you go to, at the end of Plumlee Drive, cause it's Plumlee Drive, and then Maryfield Road. That's, there's a clearing, yeah, cause that's, that, that's the last of the days of work. And so, Rockston House, and then to the south is that garage.
Only to me, that's gonna do it.
No.
That's gonna have to be handled.
Or, yeah, that's right, yeah. So Plumlee Drive...
Who knows that we know of any much place?
Right here, and the door up to the top.
Yeah, so this is the, so where those...
No, I think it's the houses.
The houses here and the shop.
And the roundhouse is past that.
Yeah, well, it's right, yeah. Roundhouse is right over here.
How many years? It's a small...
Juice. It should be about happy size. Which one?
And then, getting into small rooms.
Got to Silencer Hall, or was that...
What call? Deep probably call.
Hopefully, hopefully, I think...
I haven't seen her. Cause, were you signing that yesterday? Yeah, cause it hasn't... Travis Kelly Graham.
Jared, I forget, are you in-house at all, certain days here or not?
I will be, yeah, I have to work that out. I, uh, clearing some trial things off the calendar, and all that squared away, and then, um... It'll probably be more of a rotating schedule on master calendar Thursdays. That'll probably be a full day in-house. But, yeah, I gotta look ahead and clarify that.
Yeah.
I just have an idea.
This way here, it's almost easier.
Yeah, that's, that's the intention and the goal, you know, to be once a week at least a full day in-house.
Yesterday, I came all the way from Bridgeport to, well, I have some things on.
Do you only want, when they submit the meeting packets, do you want me to forward those to you?
Sure.
Okay.
Either way.
You didn't have to take a risk.
It's forty-five batteries.
Yeah. Forty even started. I've got... I'm gonna stop. I like to go ahead and use that. Stop. That was me, yeah.
Question, question.
Risk management, that's usually... That's small, and it's not...
You're gonna have a half, all afternoon of this stuff, really, be free, don't you?
That's what happens when you have two meetings in two weeks.
Yeah. That's how you don't have two a month.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, ten minutes, that's what it was. So, um, next is discussion regarding compensation time and overtime. So where does that start?
I had just provided you guys, um, as requested, the comp time that are on the books as of December, well, not on the books, because it was paid out in December. This conversation started, or this request started from what was paid out in December for compensated time.
I guess I had requested to put it on to talk about too.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know, okay. Couple individuals, yeah.
So, what I gave you was the workers' compensation as of December, so it shows under the gross pay. Um, that also includes any availability time, overtime, or, sorry, not overtime, availability time, response time, um, weekend on call, weekday on call, et cetera. The overtime pay is just straight what was paid out for overtime or comp time that was paid, not used. So that gives you the total pay for each individual in the county. And then the comp time as of December spreadsheet just shows anybody who, um, is utilizing comp time or signed up for comp time for twenty twenty-five. They may have changed either comp time or overtime for twenty twenty-six. We don't, I don't know that she has all the, the forms in, and Colleen has the flu, so unfortunately, she's out today. Well, fortunately, she's out today, but... Um, on the comp time, it shows their beginning balance, so that's what was rolled over from the previous year. Uh, the earned for twenty twenty-five, what they used for twenty twenty-five, and the adjustments are, um, if something was used within that month or within that year. So available at the end of the year should be nothing except for the ones that earned comp time in December. The only two that are different is Katie Dillman and Jody Eggly, because they work a seasonal position mostly, or I mean, most of their work is in the summer. They allow them to use their comp time, uh, over the week, winter hours, winter date.
So the December, just for clarification, that's just from payday till the end of the month, so a week or two or something, right? What day is payday?
No, it was, so it's, it's the month-to-month, though. So it is...
The whole month.
Comp time for December is not figured in to this, so whatever they earned in December won't show until January.
Oh, so these numbers could be...
Right.
What did they bring in last year's December into, you know, to give what you just said? So then it would be a fair comparable then? If you know what I mean?
Well, it's earned, oh.
Right, earned is what they earned in, from January through December, through December.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's all, this is just...
Yeah, the beginning is what was rolled over from the previous year. And you've asked me for a few different spreadsheets, um, you know, showing, I do have each individual, um, comp time, vacation, sick leave. If you want to look through those, I didn't want to print one of these out for each person, but if you'd like copies of those, I can get those to you as well. So it shows each month what they earned, what they, uh, used. And so that shows a little more clearly of, you know, what they earned and used over the year versus what was paid out in June and December.
So, um, and then your paper says overtime pay, so that means overtime that was paid out or, and/or comp time that was paid out?
Correct.
Both.
That was actually physically paid, not used. Cause the, the used should just be within their salary for the year.
It's paid out twice again, did June or July?
June and December. And then I also have earnings report for each individual too, if that's something you guys want to look through. It's, it's a lot of paper also, but it shows a separation of all of the, um, overtime, overtime emergency, um, availability pay, weekend availability, weekday availab... It's, it's a lot to look through, so, um, you can see why Colleen earns her pay.
I'll speak up. I've seen these sheets, I'm really familiar with them all. There was, there was a couple that stuck out a little bit. I did go and visit with Kyle on one of them, and I visited with Pat on one of them, and just said, we kind of need to regroup and kind of watch and see what some solutions are, and we have to watch our, on everyone, all departments are comp time and overtime. It's excessive, I'll say that. Where, where do we go from here on out, I don't know. I don't want to lose comp time, and I'm not, I just don't. It's a good deal, but it's also, I was the one that pretty much started it back in the mid-nineties and got it through in two thousand. And it has to be regulated, that's the bottom line, it has to be regulated. If it's not regulated, it'll get abused, and it'll go the other way. I'm not really saying this is abused right now. I just think if we kind of just regroup and look at it all and kind of just say, okay, things might have to change a little bit, cause if you look out at the year-end, I mean, that's cost us a lot on everything, and I'm not saying the work ain't there, I'm just saying, just need to watch it. I ran District One up there, and you can go back to the year two thousand, and you can see where we didn't have much comp time at the end of the year, but it was regulated. And if it ain't regulated in any department, no matter if it's overtime or comp time, we're gonna have a problem. And I don't want to go in and picking on one department to another and go back and forth. I'm just saying to everybody, we need to just regroup and watch this, um... I do have one question on somebody here, and I just, I need to know the answer, cause I don't know the answer, and I'm gonna use it on Jeff Bronco. Jeff Bronco is a sign department, went over to a road foreman position, just didn't work for him. So he went back to the sign department, but when he went back, he kept the road foreman's wage. Can somebody tell me why he got to keep the road foreman's wage? And when he went back to the sign department? I was told, and I was just told this, but I don't know that, the reason he did was because they went and gave him the extra job of permitting. Is that how it worked, or what?
I can look back in the min...
Can somebody answer that?
I can look back in the minutes, but it was that he wasn't under somebody else, so he was head of his own sign department. But there was a discussion way back when, but I can't remember what the conversation was.
It seems like I was there already when that happened, did that happen in twenty... But I remember adding the, the permit thing to his job, I think, right?
I'd have to do some research.
Yeah, I don't think...
Yeah, for example, being head of the department, he should be able to work, move his workload around to where his...
Yeah.
His comp time is not second highest.
Well, and I know on weekends, you know, you're supposed to turn in your time, I guess. I gotta ask if I could see what he turns in. I did go to McKenzie County, and I did talk to a little bit of Dunn, but I was at McKenzie County last week trying to figure out how they're doing their permitting. And that, I was just gonna touch base, which I ain't familiar on, and I'm not, is on load pass, you know, I've heard it from a couple oil companies when I visited with them last week, that Billings County is one of the worst ones to work with on it, and I was like, why? And I guess we approve everything, which we don't have to approve on some stuff on permitting? I don't understand that part, is there like a parameter we're supposed to sit? I know Pat was involved in that back when I was here, when he had it, before it got pushed on to Jeff. I shouldn't say pushed, when Jeff took it. So, is there, on load pass, cause she brought it up on their computer in McKenzie County, and she said, well, you guys are approving everything, and my question is, cause there's, the load pass will kick out everything, and the only thing that they're gonna approve is like bridges, and she was going on, she had a whole list, you know, things that... But she says Billings County kind of shows where you guys are approving, and she asked me why and I couldn't answer, I don't know. So is there, are we approving stuff we don't have to approve? What I'm getting at is, is Jeff approving stuff that he doesn't have to really look at?
Not really, there might be a few, but most of them, a lot of it comes down to routing. You know, we ex off some roads that they're not supposed to use, but you can't get all of them. Sometimes load pass, we just had one recently where it routed them through Chenchkos and there's no road there. So you have to go through and review some of those. I know some of the other counties, they don't review anything that's overweight, they just have a hundred and fifty and under is approved no matter what.
So why don't we have that?
Could, but we ran into problems with it in the past, that's why Jeff started approving them.
We did.
I think years ago, like Jeff Iverson was doing most of that, right? And I think back then it was, I know you and I had a discussion, but I think it was, said that the parameter was a hundred and fifty thousand back then, so. I don't know, talking to McKenzie County Sheriff, that's where they're at too. I know it's pulled in last week, so.
So how long does it take to do, when a request comes in for a permit? How long does it take uh? Whoever's doing it, in this case, it's Jeff, how long does it take to do it? Means it take five minutes, twenty minutes?
Depends on the permit and how many come in, but it'll be five, ten minutes depending. Depends on if it's a slug boom, but it's a complex, it's not as easy as just checking all the boxes and hit approve on the permits, you gotta go through and look at them all. And then you send back reroutes if there's reroutes that are needed, and then you approve them.
So do you know how many roughly he approves on a weekend? Because that's where the comp time's coming in, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Do you know how many like he approves? Because we were slow, I can't imagine if we were busy.
Well, when there's a rig move, that's when it gets.
Okay.
And you're sitting there for a while, and it's all day long, your phone's dinging all day long, you know. Do you want your phone dinging all weekend long, taking care of permits? I mean.
I'd like to see a report on that, I'd like to see if I can ask for that.
So when you mentioned that, it was brought to me a couple of weeks ago about what you just said of the mapping. For example, if I remember right, when I put one in, I'm gonna go to McKenzie County, yeah. By eight o'clock at night, I might know, but but Billings County is, you won't know till the morning because he goes and approves them. Well, now I understand why there's, for example, holiday time, for example, on this person, on, I don't remember what day it was, and like, why is he working two hours? Well, now, I didn't even realize this, he was approving them, didn't make sense, just forgot about it, or didn't realize it, whichever.
Well, I'm not saying he's doing anything wrong, I just would like to see where we can somehow correct this. Because you have to get paid, I think, every quarter hour, I guess I was told that from them, I should ask it here. They approve up to fifteen in fifteen minutes, I'm not getting into that, I just want to know. How many he's roughly getting and what he's approving and how, what time he's putting in. Because, I mean, Jeff does wonderful job for Billings County, and I've said that, and I just think his job. Is one of the jobs where he has flexibility of, if he came ten hours Monday morning because he worked ten hours this weekend. He should be able to somehow. Take time off and try and help this comp time situation, not only in his department, other departments too. To help this comp timeout because it just is not good the way it's going. I, I'm not for it, I I'm not for comp time, but just. I think. One of the departments, and that's why I have questions on this one, the flexibility of it, um. Gee whiz, you look at the road crew, you look at a lot of them out there, I mean, I've had them all in the back, I get. I just, I like I like seeing that, you're gonna have it, yeah, we ain't had storms or that, I understand. I just, some of them just kind of, kind of raised up a fire and. Like I said, I just wanted to regroup, but I needed some information to find out, you know, we have to deal with that, and we do. One of the departments, we have to deal with it. I could go to Kyle and talk to him about the individual. On that side of it too, I don't want to pick on some, but um. It's kind of like we just need to pull back in and see what we can do, um.
Mr. Chairman? Do you care if I say something?
You know, I was heavily involved in this.
Stand up, please.
So I was heavily involved in, obviously, because I was the rep, the sheriff is not a bad rep, but. I can't remember which one you just said, but you guys brought up a very good point about the companies. And I don't know if you attend meetings at all or not, do you? Because when the companies are there, they can't move until he approves us that permit, and we have that issue with Billings County, so when they come back and say, Billings County is the worst one. I mean, that's, that's very disheartening because. This company's running a weather, and you can't have the company in bed, and I went through that with different companies over the years. All the meetings, I got column on the carpet about what's Billings County doing, what's Billings County doing, we did turn it over to the road crew, it's still worse by the sheriff. You can't move that, that load until he approves that, and if he's got the parameter set at one five five, that's right there, because there should be a one fifty, just like everybody else. And behind that that N P energy, everybody's supposed to be handling the same thing, because you can't have McKenzie County, Dunn County, Billings County, all the different ones. These companies aren't gonna help.
Yeah.
You're making violators out of these companies, and that's what we went over time and time and time again.
And that's what they said.
Games, games to find out.
Yeah.
There's a right way of doing this, and you know.
Oh, you don't see them?
Well, I think it was all.
You can't have those companies waiting to do that, and and there's routing, the routing system, I, in fact, I was just there last. And talked to Jalal and stuff, just a lot of those, your friends or whatever, but, I mean, there's. I would be very careful as commissioners of how they're doing that. Because it's gonna come back to you guys, and you don't want oil companies or any type of company mad at the county because it didn't get approved or anything. Because you're gonna put the sheriff's office to the spot, because one of those guys is gonna stop somebody out there and that permit's not gonna be approved, it might be for a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand. They're gonna get oversized, but all they were waiting for was a permit, the big ones have the workload rates. So, I mean, really, I'll help with whatever, because I have the history from the first guy. That's been many, many years ago, I'm talking through the news thirty some years, so. I'd be kind of careful how the counties do that, because you don't want these companies mad at the county, you just don't.
Well, I don't think the issue was the timeframe, I did ask that. It was more setting our parameters of, we're approving stuff we don't need to approve. And that's what I didn't understand is, I don't know, I mean, what.
It just needs to get reviewed and try to come up with maybe a simpler, easier way, method to to get it done. And then the other thing was, um. I just um. Feel that the comp time is a. It's good, I'm fine with it, but then I think we need to, everyone need to manage their comp time and take off on. Wednesday or something and try to use up their comp time. Uh because that's what, to me, what it was designed for was um. Sure, you're working because you had to, however, whatever the reason, but then take off some time and then that would help this uh. Showing the. Dollars that we're having to kick out because then you kind of took care of it. I know that's kind of a tough thing, but the only other option then after that, one of the options is just to end comp time and just. Just pay it and then it's gonna get regulated faster. Because we don't see these numbers as commissioners unless we ask for them. It's the departments that have to regulate it, so then we uh. You know, I didn't see these numbers till the end of the year here.
I think next quarter, I'd like to see them again to see.
Well, I do too in a way.
Back in line.
Mm-hmm.
And you hit it on a knot there Dean, when you said, you know, we don't see it, the comp time was set up to design for to save the county money if you regulate it. If it would all go to overtime, which I am not for, but if it did, then you're gonna see us sitting up here complaining about all the overtime we're spending, and then we're gonna start. Making deals with them, so that's how the comp time was set up. And I don't want to lose it, I just think all I'm asking is just to kind of regroup, you know, if we can kind of regroup and go to these people. And just kind of, and I don't know, I was thinking I'd like to ask if I could have a report every month on a meeting, maybe I'm asking too much from each department head. If there was comp time or overtime on any of their employees, I'd like to maybe see it and see why and who it was and.
Why being in favor of that too?
Okay, whether it's monthly or quarterly, but I do think that we need to um. Look at it, because it was kind of a. Not really a shock, but a, a new thing, so, okay. Did you have something, Laurie, you raised your hand?
I I was curious in the. Curious in Billings County if the process is also very different than in Golden Valley, because I know that um. Billings County approved a load pass permit on our private Caduzon Creek Road, and then Golden Valley didn't, and so it got kicked back to having to reroute. And so I'm just wondering if there's certain roads that are, you know, on and off the list and how that all works, and if that's streamlined similar to other counties, so. Just a question, as you're reviewing those thoughts, please.
I'll have to look into that road.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, we'll look into that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I guess I just have a comment, um. I think the comp time thing does fall back to the department head. I mean, they need to regulate it, like you said, and look at it, and, I mean. Twenty seven years of the federal government, I had to do that as a supervisor, a work leader, administrator, we all had to do that, I mean. And it was one of those things that if you knew your people have those hours in, well, then. You had to adjust it by the next time that payroll was due or whatever, and I think, I think there's ways to do that, honestly, so.
Exactly, I agree. Thank you.
I'm not saying they can't have a little bit, but I mean, there's.
Well, I think it's it's just a. Mostly a wake up call, I guess, so.
Well, and something else I gotta point out a little bit of is I, you know, because I pretty much went through all these sheets here, and, you know, there's. There's areas where you see the individual, if they're supposed to work from six thirty to four thirty, they show up at twenty after five. I mean, that all adds up at the end of the week, and it does, and then it adds up at the end of the month, dealt with it, been around that my whole life. So that's something you gotta kind of regroup to on these areas without pinpointing which areas, you know, just want to point that out. Need to watch that too, the department heads.
Well, that's part of watching overtime, whatever, so, right.
That's all I got.
Okay.
For now.
That's pretty well good.
Marshall? You're the one that enforces it or pays it.
I don't enforce it.
Not enforces it, you pay it.
We just pay it.
So is that all right if we get a report every something? Whatever would be easier for you or?
Well, in, so I guess there's two options, either you, you know, request a report of the overtime and comp time every month. And then the department heads at their, at the monthly meeting can, you know, I can send those out to you guys too. And then they can, you know, give their report of what overtime or comp time was given. Or if they put into the ones that use the time and attendance, when they're getting overtime or comp time, they can put a comment in there. As to what they're doing, so if you want it in there, then we can print it out of our time and attendance software, so whichever way you want to do it.
I would like it every meeting for a while, we can always change it, I would like it every meeting that the department heads would be willing to do that. I guess they will if we tell them, but I'm just asking. If it's a problem or not, would it be a problem to give us a report just why, who, what, when, where? Kind of where we can see and not be, I'm not gonna say surprised, but. Um as time goes, go ahead.
I think you should do it in the time and attendance, that's what the system's for.
It's just not everybody uses the time and attendance, so.
And I can give you our vouchers, I mean, you see them anyway, you're signing them, so I don't have a problem with that, so.
Okay. Okay, well. Anything else? Let's try that. We'll go to. Looks like end of the meeting.
That's it.
Go to, because I didn't see anything else.
Just as a note for the bills, because the new year, we couldn't open up yet because we've got issues with our financial software people. So as soon as we can open up the new year, we can put them in there, but you'll have to sign the individual vouchers today, and there's not. As many as normal, regular meeting, but there's still quite a few.
Okay. All right, thank you then, someone want to make a motion to adjourn? Got a motion, second?
I second.
Motion, or meeting is adjourned, thank you all.